So we will go right straight on to Agenda Item 4, which is the Head Keepers' Update Report by Simon Mann.
Good evening.
This is Kay. We need to do Item 2, Disclosure of Interest.
Oh, I thought I'd done it. Oh. Disclosure of Interest, to deal with any disclosure by members of any discloseable per unitary interest and interest other than per unitary interest, as defined under the Seaford Town Council Code of Conduct and Loungers' Act 2011 in relation to matters on the agenda. And we've got no public, so that's that. So once said, Head Keepers, Head Break Keepers.
Good evening, everyone. I think I've tried to be as far as I can in my report as usual. So there's not a lot to add. Just a few updates in the training section. I mentioned that when we started the training so fast, they passed on Monday. So they've now completed that. Our apprentice, our assistant doing the L3 is now ahead of schedule. So he's due to finish probably May due time this year. We have now purchased a digger and it was delivered today, about two o'clock today. So that's why I'm just double checking everything today. So our plans for that moving forwards now are improving pathways, levelling tees and renovating some bunkers where the weather's changing. That sort of our winter program now will be proven to do it. Irrigation system shut down for winter. We're drawing down the flood protected and now come back up in the spring. Well, welcome. Any questions? May I ask?
No, for me.
Oh. Thank you very much, Chair. As you know, I'm not going to hold you on this committee, but I'm standing in between Cash. We are both on the Seaford Head and Leatres' Management Committee. I just wanted to let everybody know on this committee that when we had a tour around the western part of the Leatres, which actually is part of the golf course as well, the management committee are very keen to engage and talk about the vision for the whole of Seaford Head, which would include that part of the golf course. And I know you're doing all sorts of things environmentally, which is fantastic, but they're very keen to engage on that and how cutting regimes and things can be improved in the right sense. But I think that's an ongoing process. But as a representative on that management committee, I thought I'd just report back to you that there is a great need or a desire for engagement on that. I'd also like to say I loved all your bit about, you know, your talk about what you're doing with the grasses and the fungi and bacteria and how all that is being taken into account. I think that's fantastic. There was the chair of the Time for Things Working Party. I'm very pleased to see all of that. So that's great. I did have a question from a member of the public who was running near the golf course. Said, I was out early one morning, saw greens being sprayed and did ask me what they were being sprayed with. I know you're saying chemicals being used, but I wondered if I could give that person an answer to that question so that I can just...
If you could give me a答應, then I could give you the answer.
Oh, gosh, okay. I could look at, maybe I could send that to you privately, Simon, but it is something that someone said when they were running probably about a month ago. I think it was obviously just wondering if it probably was glyphosate or something, but it probably wasn't.
Definitely not. We don't use that, of course. We say we don't want to kill any birds.
No.
The majority of spraying, probably 95% of the spraying we do is for lizards and fungi and beneficial bacteria and fungi. All of our feeds are now through liquid because we can be a lot more specific with where we put it and it targets exactly what we want to target. So in the last year, we've sprayed two chemicals. So I'd be surprised if the day you expect was one of them.
Fantastic.
We've got all the records, so yeah.
Fantastic. I mean, I thought that was going to be the answer, so.
Yeah, I mean, even just a week. There's been, there's few weeks where we've sprayed more than one thing. So if it's a week or a day, you can give it in. I couldn't get that information as well.
Thank you, thank you. The only other thing I wanted to just question, because I talked to you about it before when I came up to the you remember the maintenance yard there. You talked about the watering of the roof at the View. And, you know, when I talked to you, you said it can't be anything near £2,000 to £3,000 pounds for water, you thought. Because you said, I do it myself, so I know when I do it. So I was just going to question that figure, that's all. Because I have a feeling it can't be really that big a £2,000 to £3,000 pounds a year just for watering the roof of that thing. And if it is, it has to carry on. I personally think maybe is there a possibility we could change the lots growing there so it doesn't need so much water? That would be my only comment. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Chair, I'd quite like to say something. I wanted to commend Simon, like Councilman Kew, the Simon Truss Report. Fantastic, comprehensive and great to see all the work that Simon Truss reports. And just to pick up on the local nature. So he did have Local Nature Reserve Management Committee. I'm grateful to both Councilman Kew and Councilor Cash who give their time to them as the outside representatives. And Councilman Kew's quite right. So we're hoping to set something up for probably the new year now since we're so close to the end of the year. So we'd like to come along in to some discussion with some of the other committees. Just for, I mean, we picked out a basic program, Sussilwell, just for example, obviously Russian Park as well. Just to see how all the whole area is talking to its, all the different events are talking to each other as well. Just to make sure what's happening. We can work together on that. I'm very grateful for the waiting and the support.
Any other comments? I'd just like to show hands for the, to note the contents of this report. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Very good report, Simon. Now we move on to Item Number 5, Golf Professionals' Update Report. The Golf and the View Committee is recommended to approve following fees for 2022-23, membership renewal fees, 21-22, new membership fees reduced by 3.5%, concessional rates, guest fees remain as 2021-22, standard green fees increase from £28 to £30 a week and £33 to £35 weekends and bank holidays. To acknowledge the requests from Seaford Head Golf Club and Reserve Parking Spaces, but turn down this request for reasons set within. The report, 31-36, strike 21, in line with the original decision to remove the spaces. To acknowledge the request for nine-hole membership to be offered, but turn down this request for the reasons set out within the report. I pass on to Mr Fraser Moore.
Good evening, everyone. I don't think I've got much to add to my report. There's too much paper as it is, I think. But just to say that the service budget now is over £40,000 with a good November, even with the inclement weather we've had. It's still been fairly busy. We do get an advantage of having a dry golf course where all the golf courses are shut. So we have had still visitors, societies and groups still coming, even in some really housy weather. And apart from that, we had the archaeological survey up on the top, which did actually affect us a little bit financially. We'll kind of wait and we'll bet breath to see what they found up top there. And apart from that, I think all the other places will give my report. So I'd like to take any questions on that.
I don't know, Fraser, whether you know, because I only found this out this afternoon, that the, we've had the rates reduced for those district councils.
Oh, right. No, I didn't know that. No problem.
Yes. The golf, the rate reduction is £10,680. And the View has been reduced by £3,043. Total £14,100.
Do that much shoot them out of, is that correct?
Once again, we move to...
I think you've gone a curve on this case.
Sorry. Can I just say that the request for parking spaces wasn't made by the Seaford Head Golf Club Committee, by a member of it. As a committee, we quite understand we have no desire. Well, we have desire for other things. No desire for parking spaces. First one's there.
On top of that, I'm on our members, aren't we?
Yes, yes, we have a policy that communications are guaranteed by the committee for this breach in this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask, is the additional person to do 15 hours a week, was it? Is that right? Is that to help with marketing the golf course to bring in more people? Is that what it's for? Or is it just backroom work for administrators?
It's a bit of everything, to be honest. I mean, we have two people running the whole of the golfing section where other golf courses would have five or six. So, and this has been going on for quite a few years, if you look back through many, many year report. And yeah, it's a case of a work-life balance for myself personally.
That, that's fine. Just, you know, just for the, any specific, but it's...
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else? Now, I'd like to, this will do. No, the report, this report. Item, Agenda Item Number 6.
Sorry, Chair, we've got to do motion as well.
Oh, sorry.
So can we have, would someone like to... I'm gonna, I think it might be helpful to take them separately because of the nature of the questions within them. So could someone, would someone want to propose motion two, which is about the membership fees? Thank you very much. Counselor Payne, second up to that. Counselor Brown, brilliant. And everyone in favour of the membership fee proposals? That's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, in terms of the reserve parking spaces, how the motion is raised here, would that someone like to propose that? Counselor Me, thank you. Anyone second that? Counselor Payne, thank you. Show of hands on here, everyone in favour of that motion? Is it written? That's again, is unanimous. Thank you. And then item, motion four is the live whole membership request. Again, was someone proposed motion four? Counselor Payne, thank you. Someone second that? Counselor Ledson, thank you. And can we see on the table motion two? Thank you very much, everyone. That's brilliant. Thank you. So on to Chair on to item 6.
Item 6. General Manager's Report. Right, I call it General Manager.
Yeah, everybody, just to add to the report a little bit of finance. And that place with business levels in December. We have unfortunately continued to have cancellations throughout December because of the COVID situation. Next weekend, we now have a single parking lot. We've all cancelled. Unfortunately, it's one of those things, you know, we can't force them to come. They are, as there is no restrictions in place, they are being charged a small cancellation fee to cover our costs. But we have an agreement with Cisco, we do that. So that's covered our cancellation fees. Hopefully that won't hit December too much as the following weekend again is fully booked Friday, Saturday. So hopefully that will have that put in more obviously where you see as the situation develops. On the brighter side, I've just had the November results from Lucy. The View up to the end of November is £16,000 head, bottom line of where it was two years ago. Which considering the restrictions we've had in April, July, is really quite an achievement. It's doing very, very well. We've all made that continue. Any questions? Please.
The tables and decorations, does it have to be done this year?
I'm not sure that the outside tables will survive another summer.
I've noticed that and probably the report, that's next for the other, next, not this year, no, sorry, not 2022-23, 2023-24. And yet you've got in this year to replace the indoor tables. I don't think there's other around.
Indoor tables?
Yes.
Have you replaced the indoor tables then? Outside tables, I'm trying April to grow, okay. Are you talking about the budget?
Yes. Do you, 20 tables, the 22-23?
22, 23.
2,200 are saved into the outside tables. No, you think, oh, sorry, outside chairs just replacing the following year.
Following year.
So, I'm sorry, so these three papers, the outside tables.
Outside tables.
And then, right, okay, yeah, sorry, I'm there. So they can't, they're too far off to be painted, are they?
That is not even the wood, it's the metal. Because they're outside every single day of the year. And I guess they've been there since they've opened. Metal things outside, that lasts long here. With the sea and the salt in the air. You can't just, you can't just tell you the, the policy's snapped as we are rusted and decayed and something broken. Which is very good with your painting.
On their last nature, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Chair, two things. You think that we've got to face it, the View does need some maintenance now because some of that equipment is really getting on a bit. And I think we've been lucky that it's lasted six or so years already. It has got to be, it's great. My second comment is I'd like to congratulate the manager of the View for the excellence of the catering in the View at the moment. It's really very good indeed. I've had several meals up there recently, so thank you very much.
Okay, back to Chair, if you'd like to say something. Thank you, Chair. As you know, I'm a member of the team, as you normally, and I'd probably rather miss not to follow the proceedings of this committee over the time I've been here. But I would like to say, I totally empathise with you. My works have all been cancelled in the hospitality sector this month, so I can understand how frustrating that is. But what I would like to say, which probably won't be very popular, but I would like it to be on record that I can't believe that we lose so much money on the View year on year. I did raise it with Karen Singleton. I mean, I know we've had an unprecedented year, but she has told me that over the last five years, we're regularly running a deficit of £100,000 at least. I don't understand how that can be sustainable and how all the other council activities have to subsidise that. Added to which, I would like to just back up what Counselor Brown just said. Things start to deteriorate and then they need replacing. So I do really, personally, I feel it's quite a weight, a kind of, you know, a weight round our, a stone round our neck. But I don't know how one would ever go on with that. And I don't know if this committee has discussed that. But I don't know if that's something that should at some stage be discussed. Saying your presence as running, trying to run that sufficient as possible. Thank you, Chair.
The majority of that is the mortgage, which was signed by a previous council. We've stuck with it till 2040. Nothing we can do about it. We can't even just pay it back if we suddenly had a load of money, as I understand it.
£2,000 a week.
Yeah. And why it costs that much to build that building, I have no idea.
Is there actually a signed contract that we would be in breach of if we forestalled the mortgage payment? By selling the property for instance, I'm not...
Yeah, no, no, it's a loan, isn't it? So in terms of the loan are what they are in terms of the payment each year or the number of years for which it needs to carry on. I think, I'm sure that the committee would, I'm sure, you know, a future meeting may be welcoming the opportunity to look at different options they may face for the future. As, for example, yes, you know, you could consider alternatives. But I think that at the same time, it's been such a massively challenging time in the last two years, clearly. And the financial performance this year is better than two years ago and better than the budget. So things have been heading in a positive direction in the last years as well, sure. But I guess what I would, if I was asked my advice, I might suggest to the committee that we go through, we're setting the budget for past accounts between now and the end of January. And then once we've done that, then we may want to have discussions. Just some of the longer term future discussions might be good to have in 2022, just so we can all think about what we think is best in long return, while support continues to support the efforts of the staff doing what they can with the money.
I did suggest at one point that we actually move the mortgage away from the actual View accounts so you could actually see if the View was making a profit without the millstone. Because I think it's unfair on the View management that they have to start with a minus £100,000 a year. You know, that's what I suggested we take it off of.
Yeah, I'm sure we could ask our RFO to help people to understand fully what, you know, what is it meaning in terms of the figures across the whole. Clearly, the, but I think what you said, Counselor Payne, was very fair. That is, obviously this whole committee is operating on the basis of a very long-term decision that was made by the council five, six, seven years ago. For 40 years, really, and here we are, seven years in, if you like, working with the challenges that may have been created. Of course, that's certainly the challenges that were created from that situation. But seven, you know, I suppose, you know, the 40-year process, you might think about how many years in, when do you sit down and have a look? So it might be, it sounds like we're getting towards that. Obviously for the sake of our council taxpayers and nobody else in terms of the present.
Is it an interest-free loan or is it, are we paying no interest?
This is where I need my RFOs to be. Because obviously, I only came in last year. So again, like yourself, we are coming, this is the situation, we're in.
I think when I asked the question, somebody said it was an interest-free loan, which is, there's no point in trying to remortgage because you didn't pay interest on it.
Yes, yes. I think it was a public, public works loan, which is basically an interest-free loan practice. So the cheapest you could get, and the council would get something like that.
A loan is actually fixed over the time period. It won't change. And in fact, as time goes on, it will deteriorate slightly as costs go up and everything. So, you know, it is, it's a fixed price every year, no matter what.
But it's a high fixed price, that's what I'm saying.
It's a public works loan.
Yes, it is a public works loan. So yeah, but certainly, but I think that again, within, you'll see within the budget report when you come on to it that Craig is suggesting that we, there's some additional resources put in to help to see if we can generate further income. So those are the sorts of things you want to be looking at doing, how to maximise the income of the current situation. And then the second in 2022, we might be on the long-term discussion. That's what I think. They help people to see what the future trajectory is for us.
Well, we have, I would also like to congratulate the two on putting forward the theme lights. So I think that's something that can attract people and, you know. Even if we get a little bit of money, it's something, isn't it? And appreciate the extra effort the teams had to make to do it.
Friends know them very well.
Yes, I believe that all the managers and staff are working very hard to make it pay and run along. But the point is, it has, for want of another word, it's got a mortgage on it, whether it's interest-free or not. I don't know. It's still got to be paid, isn't it?
Yeah.
And the other thing, I did know there is a clause that if Seaford Council ever sold the golf club, the money will go back to the district. Point you're hearing, yes. I mean, that's the reason the nearest district give it to us in the first place because of the money.
So I don't think anyone's telling me to do that anyway.
We've got, the other, the other good thing this, this year coming along, we've got 35 new members of the golf club.
There are in fact two income streams coming into that venue. There's the golf course and the View. And I think between them, they probably don't make a lot. And the View shows that at the moment, unfortunately, no matter what the staff is, still making us like us. There you are.
Actually, that's, that's the way things are. We've got this COVID thing, that's basically, that made it worse, really. Because it has, when I travelled around and spoke to other people in other towns, so this golf club here has got a very, very good reputation. Like it can rain at night and it stops at four o'clock in the morning. People basically can start and can still play at seven in the morning because it drains and stuff. A lot of the clubs, they just turn into mud baths, don't they?
It's only in the end, isn't it?
I'll steal my red letters when it breaks up.
Not a few hours after.
Anyway, we move on to get the committee to come up this report.
Thank you, everyone.
I've got my hat on, Chair. It's hungry.
So we're going on to Item 7, which is the exact item there.
Then we move on to the exact report, which is Item 7. Should we turn the cameras on? Should we turn the cameras on? Hmm?
Yeah, it's just that little...
Well, it's got Item 8, Seaford Head Golf Club Update. A new standard agenda item to enable the representatives of Seaford Head Golf Club at the meeting to do verbal updates on relevant business activities from the motion. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the committee for putting this item on the agenda to have the activities of the golf club. Into Sean Doyle, who's our new secretary. He's been captain for ages because of the COVID. He's not moved on. Secretaryship as well. A reminder of our role really, it's to organise activities for members, to run competitions, entertain their handicaps, generally promote the game of golf in the town, interesting members and so on. Recent activities, our lady section, not many folks.
Recent activities, a lady section, like many clubs, very short members, twenty five ladies, which compared with twenty fifty three men, it's minimal really. So they advised a plan where they'd have an open day, and with Fraser's help, we organised a very successful day. Ends on November twenty third, we had a dozen ladies along. They played nine hours of golf with our members, confident golfers, all ten bars. And hopefully that will translate next year into new lady members, because we are desperately short. There's a D B R of juniors. So that's that, a golf club quiz next January, which is return some activity this year. Hopefully get more things going again. On the ladies' side, an issue that does cause unhappiness to members is the lack of a golf presence upstairs in The View. Previous town clerk was adamant that he mentioned of golf upstairs would deter the customers. As a consequence, we're forbidden, so our honoured boards are downstairs and rather at the entrance. Even the pictures of past captains, very wide up displayed, didn't they? Change rooms, toilet, so it's not a desirable thing. We aren't really asking a lot, we don't have a lot of boards upstairs, it'd be nice if we could display the past champions, last cup champions. Which is the current secretarial captains. A notice board, but we could put last notices, encouraging people to come to events and make up the game. So that's all we want most. Sean's got a few things to add. John?
Oh, do you?
Thanks for the.
Oh, do you? Excuse me, gentlemen, again, thank you. Thank you very much for the invite to come along, welcome that. For people, honestly, really. I've obviously, from past decisions and bits and pieces that went on, we have alienated a lot of members. And that's, you know, a disvision of a new clubhouse. A lot of members don't feel it's a clubhouse, you know, and that is partly because as we sit here, we're proudly, you know, we're looked upon by ex-mayors, proudly looking down at us. And the members board, you know, of a board of chairman and mayors over the years, and that is all downstairs, there is no inkling it's a golf club. When you think there's forty thousand golf clubs in the world, we were one of the first forty golf clubs to be built outside of Scotland. You know, the town should be proud of that. You should walk into that clubhouse and realise there's a sense of history to this club. And actually feel proud that this club is in that community, and it has no sign of it. We can see all the local art, the artists, there's a notice board, but nothing to do with golf on that notice board upstairs, it's about anything that's coming up. So we just hope to have a presence, really, more than the locker room and toilets. A presence that, there's nothing upstairs, it's like, downstairs, it's like a pro, you fancy a game of golf, there's nothing there that advertises golf, it's about events. We are trying to encourage members, and we've taken on someone to, someone to the committee recently, to try and encourage social events. So we're working with Craig, there's a quiz night in January, there's sixteen teams, sixty four people already booked on to come to that one night, and we're planning to do the same in February and March. We're planning to increase the amount of inter-club competitions, see, get other club members here from other clubs. Local clubs, Willington and East Brighton and places like that, to see what course we've got, and actually, we're bloody good value. So if they come along and see it, have a nice bit of food in The View afterwards, then obviously, hopefully, they're going to maybe turn to members in the future or encourage trends to come back and society days, et cetera. So we're going to try and do everything we can to increase, aid golfers, lead revenue for yourselves and The View. And it's saying, yeah, we would like it, be a little, a little bit like a golf club. Just some recognition that that's something, you know, that should be there, you know, displaying that proud history rather than hiding it downstairs in the basement where we're going to see. A lot of members, obviously, still go on to us, et cetera, about, I think it was two years ago, possibly three years ago, Covid, we've lost a year or so in memories, haven't we, a little bit? But there was talk, of course, of building a spiked bar and bits and pieces, and how, I've worked in local authority for twenty five years, I've worked in a building, I think this year down the lose one point four million. We know, we know budgets are tight, and we know things are put on hold. But maybe that communication needs to go out from the council to the members, rather than it look like actually as a club, we're not really bothered. Yes, we are bothered, there's not a private space for the club members to have a little drink or even a away from wedding functions, if there's a wedding function on. But maybe that communication needs to come out from the council. Also, you know, we know we plan to do this, obviously, financial restraint has stopped us doing that. But at the same time, we would like it to be part of the plans in the future somewhere. Obviously, we understand we're probably on a four, five year recovery programme at the moment, which isn't going to get done next month. Another big thing that's sort of come up is something called safe golf, so we're working alongside Fraser. We now have to have what is known as a club welfare officer. Another role, I seem to be taking on every role. I've put that hat on too, so I need to have a VBS check and bits and pieces, I've attended already a three hour online safeguarding calls for children, but also covers vulnerable adults, I've got another two and a half hours to do on that, I have to have my picture and contact details displayed at the club. And the idea is that actually, it's a safer environment where people, if they feel they can see in something that's not quite right, they can report it to us. Or Fraser, we've been working on register, where we can forward it on to England Golf. Failing to comply with that means that actually, we lose the right to use the handicap system. And actually, anyone who comes to play golf around the country wouldn't be able to enter their card into the handicap system to then get their handicap authorized. So it's a big thing for the club not to be part of, so we're actively progressing to do that. Hope to have that complete by the end of January. That's where we're pretty much at, I won't baffle on too much longer, because we're only a brief chat. But thank you very much again for your time and invite us, but if you've got any questions, feel free to ask.
I think I like the idea of seeing some of these golfers' pictures up on the wall, I don't play golf, you should say it, but I think it'd be a good idea. Do I go up the full road to the other one? I mean, the photos and the measuring names are all the way down on the way out.
Yeah. Most clubs are very proud to show off, you know, but mind, most of these are local people. You know, they're, you're going back a hundred odd years, and there's people, people go, that's my grandad up there, or, you know, my brother or son, or whoever it is up on the ball. It'd be quite nice for people to see that, because it's part of the local community, rather than somehow, by the way, and we understand it's a venue, and, you know, you have to generate income. Every business has to try and balance its books, as you do. But I don't think people are going to be put off from booking it as a venue, just because in the hallway upstairs near the lift or something, you've got a few hordes of members.
And then the other thing is, I suppose, if you've got people from outside coming in, and they say, oh. They realise it is a golf club and there are golfers there, so it's more like enjoying it.
Exactly that, at the moment, if someone comes up for one of the events and, you know, sadly Craig's had a cancellation due to Covid. If they come up this time of year, frankly, there isn't a view, you know, this time of night, and you wouldn't know it was in a golf club possibly. Because they're not advertised as a golf club, they're advertised as The View, and this is where it is. So, actually, and one more point, which I've just called Simon's eye, and Simon's got mine. The course is in fantastic condition, fantastic condition this year, the best it's been for many a year, and obviously, the hard work Simon's team put in have made that such a wonderful course to play on, I can't imagine, I imagine Fraser must be getting very positive comments about the course and bits and pieces.
Nothing but positive, apart from, I think the only negative we have is it's a bit slow sometimes because it's been so populous. So, but as I said, for as long as it's, so, yeah, it's been, yeah, from visitors and members alike, you know, from all over. And there's some guys coming from some pretty prestigious clubs that have commented on how good it's been. So, you know, we're talking guys that are probably playing two, three times what the members are that are golfers, and they're saying how good the condition is. So, you know, we're lucky to have this chap here because he's been something else, you know, I've known him for, all the time I've been here, for nearly eighteen years, so, yeah, he's done a really good job.
I think it's something we should look into straight away, not put on the back burner, because it's, at the end of the day, it's a venue on a golf course, and you should be promoting it. It doesn't matter what, people come up there for a wedding or a birthday, if you've got a display on the wall, it generates interest, it's going to generate interest in the golf club anyway. And the people who have put time and effort into the golf course shouldn't be put downstairs in the toilet, do they? They should be upstairs in a bowl where people can see what's going on, and put faces to, to recognise people. I think it's something we should look into, like, not put it off for another meeting, another meeting, I think it's something we should act on.
Sorry, Chair. It was agreed many years ago, when Pat was captain, that you put anything you wanted on the stairs and coming up to the lift. And that was agreed, I don't know, that's got lost in change of captains or whatever, but that's already agreed, and we just discussed, was it, what else we do on the corridors?
Yeah, they're after the corridor, like, members.
Your computers going in there as well. Your handicap computer.
Yeah, see the pictures. They're unhappy because they're, they don't realise that, clearly they are, all these money. But it would be nice, some of that thing there, perhaps one of the notice boards at the back, we took one out of those. I'm sure there were nice notices, not tacky notices on there. Do you want me to go show it to Craig, members?
We'll take it away, Fraser and Craig themselves, we'll see what we can do. Point being heard loud and clear, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good, good, so, I absolutely agree with councillor Wobbe, yeah, I think that is something that, I'm not a golfer, but I mean, I rather, I'm councillor Brown would probably know the history of this, but as to why the restrictions placed on, I'd rather imagine it was because the restaurant, The View was for the town as much as for the golf, and that's the way it was sold, I imagine. Or I'm sure you can remember as well. But I don't see why that should stop the golf being represented quite well in that space. The only other thing, and I would say, I mean, I walk my dogs across the golf, the greens are fantastic, I mean, they really are fantastic, so I'm not a golfer, but I can see that. The other thing I would say, surely, the USP of this golf course is the eighteenth hole. I mean, where, I don't know golf courses, but I can't imagine there are many other golf courses with that amazing view, which leads you down to the golf, The View, which is, I mean, surely this is a great USP that must somehow be sold to other golf clubs. To say, have you ever done an eighteenth like this, you know? I don't know, but whenever I'm standing at the top though, I go, wow, that's an amazing sight, you know?
I think it's true, you stand on the thirteenth green, and people look at the Seven Sisters stretching away before we are, and again, again, we don't even have pictures of those views in The View. So actually, you know, people don't see, you can see CFA base sweeping away before us and brightening the distance and the rest of the code. You know, so they are unique selling points to this club, they are very much something that we can push, and we're trying to actively engage practice this year, we're taking those for ourselves. Actively engaging, getting other members in and charity days to try and encourage new golfers in. And certainly, we can't encourage the youth section yet until we've got a, you know, club welfare officers, I hope to be in bits and pieces. But we've got plans to try and encourage local children, it's free for local children, and we're going to try and encourage to members to clear out those sheds potentially and bring up old sets. And if they get, they walk away with the kids at the end of the day, they walk away, but at least they've had a chance to have a round in the afternoon and maybe get to love the game. Because otherwise you've got a very aging membership. I'm the youth section at the moment.
Thank you, Chair, I'm very pleased to see that we're getting better liaison now with the golf members themselves, I think that's been a bit missing in the past. I know Fraser does his best to keep everybody informed and things like that, but now we're actually listening to the people that are using the golf course and their concerns and issues, so, you know, long may it continue.
I was just going to say, actually, with regards to The View, my feeling is when you walk into the thing, it's such a big area of grey where those staircases is I know you can actually wallpaper it with a picture, in the sense of you have it all the way along there, just to soften that whole entrance when you come in the top. Because it's just literally square grey walls, and with somebody, you know, very good photographer or something, you know, that takes a picture of that eighteenth view looking down across the bay and everywhere like that, that would sort of cover everything, you've got the golf course there, you've also got a view of the town and the beach and everything that goes across there. That would just soften that whole area as you walk in, people would just be like, wow, you know, yeah, that's the view from the top, you know, so actually give it a sort of dynamic to our entrance.
There's just one other problem, and it's been made, is electric charging points. They put some up there?
Yeah, we've asked, we're talking to Lewis District Council about that, when we start to get some on, we'll bring it all back to the committee. We talked to Lewis next.
Because as I'm on the news today, one of the winning five cars now being sold to a electric.
I think it's back in play down the budget for next year. And it's quite a costly project to set up, you know, with a long time to get in time back to.
It doesn't make any difference to me because I'm a hydrocarbon man.
If I've got an electric car, it wouldn't.
You can get companies that will actually install it for part of the profit, like, so you can get it cost neutral in that sense. So there's certain companies out there, I think as they become more, you get more of them as well, so.
I think we could also look for grants as well, so I know there's a new scheme now that's trying to encourage people, so there must be, we must qualify with ABRA, I mean, if New Haven can get three hundred and thirty million, we can have a few of for a charger.
I do, I know what it's like, we need three hundred million.
The eligible authority to apply for the relevant grants, it looks just like that, so I'm talking to Mr.
Okay, if that's, you know, I can just put me in there, I was at a meeting the other day, and this business of grants specifically came up, there was a school that needed cameras, you know, to make sure there was no antisocial behaviour or anything like that. I mean, I don't know how a golf club would pull you into it, but it's worth it, huh? You don't ask, you don't get it.
And if you remember as well, it's not just a golf club, it's a venue where you finish golf, or might finish golf in the Tuesday morning. The majority of the people in there are non-golfers, a lot of our around the community, having lunch and enjoying The View, et cetera.
They might not see that as an important thing, that you want a grant to pay for some pictures to be put on. I don't know, but that was just saying, do you know anybody that needs money?
I was up this morning with a rotary, tea or coffee morning. If that's all, then we will call a meeting till close.